Eric.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Bethel meetings meeting of April 8th, 2025. The pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Thank you. Start with introductions.
Ken Person, Commissioner. Stuart Graydon, Commissioner.
Mike Zabrowski, Commissioner. Al Shanley, the Chairman.
Kitty Grant, Vice Chair.
Ian Ryan, Mr. Speaker.
Doug Kennedy, Alter.
Eric Murphy, Alter.
I'd like that, Commissioner.
Perfect. And staff, what is this meeting?
That's my guy. Planning it so.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Dave McCollum, Land Use Coordinator.
Excellent. Perfect. Thank you. And we will move right into the continued public hearing for TD and Sons, uh, Inc., at 53 Taylor Ave., 830G. I am accused from this.
All right.
Eric, are you okay?
Mr. Kirkhouse. Floor is yours.
See, I have a couple of slides.
When you're ready.
Just let, oh, he's out. Steve, just so you know, there's some hard copies here that's going in front of the commission. You're muted.
You're unmuted.
Steve Trinkus, for the record, uh, representing TD and Sons. Um, I'd like to be able to clear the screen to share my CAD files, uh, with the commission.
Screen sharing should be enabled.
Okay, um. I'm so used to the Zoom buttons. Which button is on Google, David?
So, so at the toolbar, at the bottom of Google Meet, you're going to look for the button that has the box with the arrow pointing up inside.
Okay, all right.
Here we go.
All right, dark in my screen. Okay, I guess that's better. Um, so, um, Tony DeLorio met with Beth, uh, you know, end of last week, earlier this week. Um, and again, asked about using a duplex footprint that is actually used on the Knollwood, uh, Drive project. So, uh, Tony asked me to look at this, uh, because the original time we looked at this, um, to replace the current configuration, the, you know, there would have been massive retaining walls, um, along the northern property line, uh, because these units are about 20 foot deeper than the current ones proposed. So, what I did was, you know, the, the four unit building, which was originally eight one bedroom units, which is where the existing house is, where my cursor is right now. Those are four two bedroom units. Now, we made that change at the last hearing. So what I did was take this footprint, uh, you know, um, and put it here where we had a three unit building. But this will be four one bedroom units. It's the same footprint, but we'll just go back to the, you know, upstairs, downstairs, uh, units. The first four ones will have, uh, type A, uh, three of them will be type A, uh, handicap, uh, units, uh, one at 80%, one at 60, and one at market rate. So then I was able to place, um, the duplexes where we are cutting into the ledge rock, because then I don't have a slope issue. Um, I will have a little bit of a retaining wall on the back, uh, right corner of this first unit. Um, the next two will, you know, have a cut in the rock behind it, so there'll be no retaining wall. The fourth unit will have a retaining wall on the, uh, south, actually the northwest corner a little bit. Um, the plan that I gave Tony yesterday, which he shared with Beth, I just did this yesterday, so obviously I've got to adjust my parking and driveway, if, you know, to me, uh, to make this configuration, uh, work. This brings us from a total of originally 26 units, which was dropped to 22, down to 20 units. Um, so we'd like to just get the, you know, the sense of the commission that, you know, this is the preferred option, and then I will redesign the site as needed, you know, to make all the bells and whistles, uh, work.
Great. Thank you. Um, anything else?
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Just for the record, Neil Marcus, on behalf of the applicant. Hey, at this point, since there have been ongoing negotiations to significant modifications of the plans based on all the comments, uh, I think I agree with what Steve's looking for. A little bit of feedback from the commission. If this proposal looks like something that's agreeable, then he's got to engineer it. He's got to complete the interview.
Okay. Thank you. Beth, uh, public, anyone here from the public which to speak on this application, please come forward. Name and address for the record, please.
Sylvia Huchman, 58 Taylor Avenue. I'll just.
What was your name, Donna?
Sylvia Huchman. Um, I'm still not hearing anybody answering my concerns that I've been speaking about for the past two hearings. Well, usually, I'm sorry, I wasn't asking. I'm just, I, I did listen to the videos of this meeting. Well, usually, I, you didn't, I didn't hear your given name at the March 25th meeting, who was talking about the truck and the air quality. I don't see this.
Okay.
Uh, before I go on with my concerns, I would like to ask, um, all of you who actually been to the site and was familiar with our street and what the site looks like.
Yep, I, I've been there.
Right, I didn't understand, but I've been on the, on the property. So I understand that you all, and did you guys walk down and up the street?
Down, up, and down the street, yeah.
Wait, then did you feel?
I've been up and down the street.
Okay, and did you feel safe walking up and down the street?
I've, I've, I haven't walked the entire street. Uh, I understand, uh, that it is a tight street, but I, I don't believe I could say I felt completely unsafe walking up and down.
So, um, going back, why I'm bringing this up, uh, is because I need to understand that you, um, understand why this is a big concern for me. If you saw, uh, with, uh, how it's surrounded from every point with, very closely with neighbors, and to understand the effect that will have on, once again, like I mentioned before, blasting, air quality, and traffic, giving extra 50 cars to our sh- small street. So, um, I would like to get some responses on, on the concerns that I have, which I'm not getting.
No, and, and I understand your concerns, and, and I think we've well documented them, and they will be addressed, I think, tonight. We have, in my opinion, made progress in trying to make a better plan for this application. And if we have consensus of this is the direction they want to move forward, your comments that were addressed to the commission, uh, I'm confident will be addressed as we move forward, uh, with this.
And I understand at the last meeting, you were supposed to get a number of trucks that are proposed to be going back and forth.
So because the development has changed, calculations have most likely changed, so we will have to get back to you guys on that.
Okay. So you guys truly know responses.
Unfortunately, at this moment, I, I don't have those for you.
May I say something? There will be. But you see, as, as, as our, uh, as the engineer said, the, the whole setup has changed now. Now, it's, it started, what is it, 26? Was it 22? On a 22, now it's a 20. So the engineer still has to figure out where everything is going and how much, um, I, I believe because of what is going on, that there'll be less, um, removal of, of.
It changes the design, so we just don't know the calculations or anything. There, there is still, of course, it is going to be a construction site, so we, we do have to get you those, that information.
Yes, but there have, there was. Uh, that's a change, uh, with that, that what will be done for the air pollution that will be having for months and years. Yes, because we won't know how many trucks have to come in and out until we know what he's doing. He'll, he'll give us the figures. We don't know how many trucks. We don't know how many trucks yet. But we'll know that by the end of our next meeting.
I understand your frustration, but there has been a, a change in the plan, and I, I think, uh, the, the applicant is trying to work with staff here to reduce the size of this application. And it's ongoing. And unfortunately, it is part of a public hearing now, so you guys are all aware of it. Sometimes these things happen if, if, you know, not within the public realm. So we, we, it's just ongoing. I know it's frustrating.
What about, uh, the blasting and the fact that it will have a tremendous effect on our wells, on our septex, and will have effect on our, um, housing structure, which is, uh, they're not new houses. This is at least 70s development. What about that? None of those answers can be, uh, if you get any of those answers, who will be responsible? I should come for Mr. Trinkus.
As discussed the last meeting, you know, pre-blasting surveys, if this project were to move forward, would be taken of your, of your homes and of your wells, and monitoring would be done. We've talked about, you know, potential bonding things in the past year, how we could mitigate any issues should something go wrong. Hopefully it doesn't, if this project does move forward. Um, unfortunately, we're just at a mode of a continuation of a design process that those answers cannot be answered. Can we, as a group, say, hey, we like the direction this is going, or maybe we don't say that, and we, we ask for something else. I don't know what's going to happen the rest of this hearing. Again, I know it's been two weeks, and you don't have your answers yet. I would be incredibly frustrated myself. Uh, but in fairness to them, they do not have the direction of what the ultimate plan will be yet.
Well, because I don't want later to hear it's too late for that now, so that's why.
No, we're, this is, we're still here, and, and, and all of your concerns have been, uh, in the public record, both via video and, uh, you know, in, on our meeting minutes, so we, we totally understand where you're coming from.
Steve has us around the neck on this.
Oh, this is my, you know, I don't have as much experience as all of you, so this is why I am drilling to get answers for my concerns. Once again, I've been writing, and I have a copy here too, if, if, you know, I can give it again, that highlights some of the big issues, concerns that I have. That, um, that, that's really all I keep wanting to ask. What, what will happen to us, because I don't hear anything about, um, what's the best interest of current residents? What will be done for that? That's, I keep hearing how we know, I believe this is still, um, too big for that space. But I want to hear more, what will be done to protect us in my part.
Understood.
That's all I've got.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Please, come forward. Name and address.
Senator, for you, that is Lynn West. How long is this public hearing open till? What was the continuation date, the final?
Um. Do we, do we have that?
She says there already a continuation, correct?
There, there was a continuation of this.
What's this, the, the statue? How far can you go? Because I have questions from a month ago that haven't been answered yet either.
Yeah, they have till the next meeting to close the year.
The next meeting, the closing.
There are two continuations.
Two weeks? Yes, two weeks. Two weeks, so they're going to do a new design within two weeks.
Uh, that is our understanding.
Okay, all right. The, be consistent with other, other projects. So there's going to be some height issues with these buildings. There are going to be two stories, correct?
That is what has been proposed.
Right, well, because the proposal keeps changing, that's why I'm asking. So are they going to fly a balloon so we can see what the height of the buildings are going to be?
It has not been requested yet.
I'm going to request it as a citizen. Bethel. Um, green space. What do we have for green space? Uh, area wise? Is it going to be consistent with other projects, or is it going to be Parlova Park, or the Promont Municipal Center? But. I'm going to have a question, Mr. Kozlowski.
Yes, I understand that, because I understand you not have to respond back and forth.
No, I understand, please. No, also, I was, you don't have to. These are my questions. No, I, I hear you. Okay, I know how it works. Okay, and I left, uh, the last question was, I'd like to know where Mr. Trinkus got his information for off the GSI map, G I S maps, or the, um, the plan of conservation and development maps? Those start us up. Where he got all his general information for that property? Okay, so.
Thank you.
Look forward to the next meeting, get an answer, or tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else here? Yes, please. One more.
Because, um, you're talking about the, um, apartments nowhere, but that the space could load, or it's just?
The overall volume, the square footage of the, of the development?
Yeah.
I, I do not, uh, we can, we can certainly ask that question.
Because, uh, if you're, uh, just making the comments bigger, if these. Yeah.
Okay, that's a good question. Thank you. Anyone else here?
I, I have a question.
Please come forward. Just your name and address, please.
Sure, um, Heidi Schwedler, um, I don't live in town. I live out of town, but I grew up here. So I just feel like I have some input. Well, um, it would be so, give your address, please. Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, so I'm, uh, 207 Norfolk Street, extension up in Plainville.
Okay.
All right, so the question was, say this toll deal gets done, and what happens if people's homes are damaged during the whole process, this building? Who, who's going to fix that?
Well, uh, uh, we have discussed that in the past, where we would be doing pre-construction surveys, pre-blasting surveys of structures of, of the homes, um, and their wealth. Uh, our applicant has discussed, yeah, agreeing to do so. And then there would be a post, uh, inspection as well.
That's one of my questions I just had a moment. Um, is it going to be open for a bit if I, we get something else, or?
Uh, tonight, well, we're going to be taking some more questions here, and then we're going to have permission questions as well, so. Thank you. Anyone else here in the public, in the room? Oh, anyone online, David?
I'm not seeing any, uh, raised hands at this time, apart from Mr. Trinkus, who I'm assuming would like to provide response comments. I, I will just take the opportunity, uh, there is someone who is joining this meeting by phone. If you could kindly mute your microphone, just so we don't have interference during the meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Trinkus, before we get to you, I'm going to go to the commission comments. Kenny?
Um, some of the concerns have been raised.
He's, he's going to respond to some questions. I was going to allow any other comments or questions from the commission before he responds? Is that okay?
It's usually that, that you think this answers the public's questions.
Okay, then we can go to Mr. Trinkus. I apologize, I'm still learning the ropes here.
I know, that's why.
Mr. Trinkus, would you like to respond to any of those questions, please?
Uh, sure, I would. First off, we did submit, uh, because the commission requested it, a traffic study, uh, from Kermit Wa, traffic engineer, for the 26 units, uh, which showed that the existing level of service on, uh, Taylor Avenue was still a level of service A, which is the best, and would remain so after this development. He did recommend some signs at the, uh, sharp turn, uh, which would be up to the police department, whether that's, you know, if they want to permit the signs there, um, or not. Um, we also noted that, you know, we would, uh, work with DPW to cut that rock back at the corner, uh, you know, the sharp corner of, uh, Taylor Avenue, which is, uh, north of our site. Um, so, you know, that, you know, addresses, you know, the traffic issues. Um, also, we put in a, uh, you know, a blasting plan, um, and spoke at the last hearing that, you know, pre-blast surveys, uh, you know, will be done, um, in conjunction with the fire marshal, um, of adjacent or nearby residences, as long as the homeowners allow the pre-blast survey to be done. If they, uh, don't allow access, then the, the, you know, we can't trespass on their property. But the purpose of a pre-blast survey is to document, you know, any issues that homeowner may have with their existing foundation, cracks in the sheet rock wall, et cetera. You know, general site conditions to have a baseline before the work is done. Um, additionally, the, you know, the way blasting is done today, it's not like the old days where they drilled a bunch of holes and put the heavy rubber mats or steel mats on it, and they went boom with lifting the mats, you know, five, six feet in the air. That's not what occurs today. What occurs today is, you know, drilling, uh, a bunch of holes and with charges at a close proximity to each other, and basically fracturing the rock in place. No longer, you know, blowing it up in a giant pile, but fracturing it so it can be dug out in place. And that does two things. One, it's, you know, it, there's very little dust generated by that, because the rock is not flying above the ground surface. Um, and it also, you know, lessens the, uh, you know, potential vibrations, because it's, you know, smaller charges that are cracking the rock, not, you know, popping it completely loose. Uh, this plan would also, by these, uh, few retaining walls that I have to put in, we would lose more of the rock material on site, uh, to accomplish the grading associated with, uh, at least two of these units. So that would lessen the amount of material that has to leave the site. Um, you know, these plans all do meet the, you know, to ask, uh, answer Mr. Draper's questions, you know, the height of requirements, that, you know, the duplex ones actually have been built out on on the corner of Knollwood Drive and, and Reservoir by the current applicant. Um, so, um, we do meet that as far as mapping. Um, everything from actually, uh, in front of, uh, Mr. Draper's property, uh, uh, down the road, um, was a field survey by New England Land Surveying locating, you know, all the utilities, roadway, topography, you know, up Taylor Avenue to this site, and then topography on the entire site. Um, the, uh, only mapping, and I'm not sure which particular document it was, uh, on the town website, was to, it shows the sewer district, uh, including this property, and hence the, um, you know, request to public utilities to extend sewer and water, uh, to this site, um, as far as mapping goes. Um, so, you know, we will, once we finalize the plan, we will address other, you know, technical comments, you know, from the neighbors. Um, I know all the information is on the record. Um, but, you know, you know, responses would be different from this plan versus the last plan. So that's why we have not provided them at this time.
Steve, before you finish, it's Neil Marcus. Uh, there was a question from the public. Have you determined the reduction of the footprint of the buildings between the 26th unit and the now 20 unit proposal?
No, I haven't, you know, because the parking's going to change with it, so I have not, uh, figured out. I believe there will be a reduction in impervious cover, because the duplex units have a one car garage. And there's the space right outside the garage, so that obviously is going to listen, uh, um, lessen, uh, some of the, uh, parking that the original plan had. But we'll provide all that information. I just, I don't have it yet.
Good. Uh, it just survived me, uh, in addressing a couple of questions from the public. Uh, Steve, Steve has talked about blasting, and, and by the way, my only comment about blasting is, most of us learned about blasting from watching television in John Wayne movies, and that's not blasting, or the insurance. Uh, blasting is just a technique, uh, to break up rock. It, in my mind, it's a lot better than hammer and drop hammer, using a drop hammer. But, uh, the, to the public who really doesn't understand blasting, and I can understand why they don't, um, it is a very controlled method. And generally speaking, the blaster is very conscious about not damaging the neighboring properties, because that's where the insurance company does have to pay for damages if there's a pre-blast survey and the blast is not done correctly. So, to answer the question, who pays for this? Eventually, if there's a problem, insurance policy is usually in effect. Um, but one of the other questions from the lady at 58 Taylor was, she said, what is the best, does the commission consider what's in the best interest of the, uh, existing residents, current residents? And the answer is, the statute really doesn't say that, and, and she, she shouldn't take this up with the commission. That's in 8-30G. It does not say that you consider the impact on neighborhood, because actually, they've set this thing up so that you can take four acre zones in the back country of Greenwich. They put affordable housing in there. So everybody would say, well, what's the effect on us? We don't want these small houses in our, you know, in our, in our zone. So the answer is, the act really is the opposite. It doesn't consider it. It actually encourages affordable housing across all zones in all communities, not, no matter what your economic, uh, s- standards are. But the you should be aware that the statute talks about overriding condition, concerns with public health and safety. That's a different standard. Public health and safety, we will be, and you're going to see to it that we do. But the fact that the neighbors, uh, don't want to be inconvenienced by noise during construction, I agree with them. Nobody wants to be inconvenienced by noise during construction, but the act, in your, in your decision under the act, really doesn't concern that. Certainly have hours of operation. You can't start up a site at 5:30 in the morning. You can't work, uh, you know, Sunday's afternoons, whatever. That's reasonable, but with respect to the impact on the neighborhood, it is limited to the issue of public health and safety. So the extent that the public is going to look to the commission to do something else, it's not in the act, and they should be aware of that. Um, there was one other question here. Oh, no, no, Steve touched on the traffic, uh, report. That has been a consideration. Traffic is a, an issue of public health and safe, public safety, obviously. And I think we've addressed that, uh, in the traffic report that's been submitted. So having said that, I think we've tried to address, and the answer again, as Steve indicated, as we do the final engineering on the plan, some of the other questions that were raised will be answered, but that's where we are for the evening. Thank you.
Kenny?
Uh, it's my understanding there's five more houses that aren't available to be on the, uh, utilities. And we'd like to talk about extending it a little bit further to get the last five houses on the street. Open that up for discussion at some point. And then possibly, if it's doable, consider possibly a bond to ensure any other possible future damage.
Makes sense. Stuart?
So, um, under the heading of public health and safety, water quality and water availability and air quality, I believe, would fall under that chapter heading. Um, certainly, as has been discussed, a pre-blast survey and, um, to echo Kenny's request, a, a bond, because you, you can meet all of this during construction, and a year later, your well runs dry because the aquifer took that long to drain. So this isn't just a bond during construction, it's to some assurance to the neighbors that they're going to have water, and if they don't, the developer's going to stand behind that shortage. My opinion. That's it.
By the way, if, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but if you're going to do that, you have to establish a townwide standard for everybody, because anytime you build a well next to your neighbor's property, you run the risk of.
But we're dealing with a, with a site that has a history.
Yeah, but you can't cherry pick it. You really have to have a regular, it may make sense. I'm not opposed to what you're saying.
This is what my position will be.
Yeah.
Thanks, Phil. Kenny?
I agree.
I, I don't agree with your comment, uh, now, because I do believe pre-blast, what blasting surveys do create large problems, and they are unique to an 830G where there could be a lot of blasting, and people, uh, people who live in homes right near that vicinity could be affected, and I, I believe we should, that, that should be paramount in your mind.
Absolutely.
Um, now, public health and safety, that, that, that includes a variety of issues, as far as I'm concerned. And one of the issues that we, we were asking, and, uh, I believe it's since this Huchman was asking, and I don't think we have an answer to yet, is how many trucks are going to be coming in and off of that site? Now, I, I did hear a comment by, by Mr. Trinkus, that trucks and cars are the same. No, I'm sorry. Gasoline and diesel are two totally different animals. And, uh, I, I, you know, and I, I'm going to do some, uh, looking into the DNP myself, but I believe of, of, the trucks will cause a lot, diesel trucks will cause much more pollution than cars. And I'd like to know how many trucks are going to be coming and going from that site. Uh, I think that's very, very important for all of us, and I believe, um, we also make the note of, um, Mr. Draper's comment about balloons. Mr. Draper's comment about balloons on the building. He made fun of it about that and I have it, I, and that has to be answered. And if not at this meeting, at the next meeting.
I thought Steve actually answered that.
I didn't hear that.
The height of it within the current zoning regulation.
I, I feel like that, but I would like, I would like to answer it.
Yeah.
In fall. Now, there's also a two-page report here from the police department. And I've heard nothing, uh, in the two meetings of any comments on this police report. I think it, it, it's one of the largest police reports I've ever seen. And I think it has to do, a lot of it has to do with the traffic and, and the curvature of the road. And I think it's important that we, uh, get more comments on, on, on this report. And that's all for now.
Diane?
Um, I was using, um, on the traffic study that was done. Um, it's done, uh, after the, everything is built. So there's nothing showing, um, what's going to happen when the trucks are going back and forth. Um, so that's, it wasn't addressed. That was, that was a concern in the police department. And the police haven't responded yet on that. So, um, I think that's important. Um, also, my question is whether or not Vanderbilt Chemicals were contacted on this about, you know, any effect on property. Um, I know, you know, we're still concerned about the well issue and, and the, and the water quality. Um, and the blasting report didn't have anything there, um, about, you know, the effect with, uh, with the air quality with, um, I know you're saying it's not that much. Um, it just kind of negated that, kind of didn't address it. And they used, um, Bristol's name in there instead of Bethel. So my question is, is it, is it focused on Bethel or is, did you just reuse something that was for Bristol? Um, you might have something wrong with that, but for now, I'm, I'm still concerned about the wells and, um, the air quality and, um, the traffic situation. And the other thing was the, you know, technical engineer was, I know he said that that's, that was requested back in January and I, I don't know how that's going to still be addressed. I know last time you said that that wasn't the right person to hire, but, um, and then how can you redo all this in two weeks? There's one week that, you know, was missed totally because he was waiting for information. So that's another two weeks. So the question is, are you going to allow extra time for this?
Most likely, yes. Yeah, no question. That was easy. The other ones you had were some easy.
I, uh, I feel concerns on well septic, uh, air quality. Um, I'm particularly hung up on the rock. Right? Getting rid of that rock on the curve, I think is a tremendous safety issue in, in the safety fixed area. I'm also very concerned that you don't own the rock. So that, uh, that brings up a big, hey, if this is a safety concern and we're going to remediate it by getting rid of the rock, you don't have permission to remove the rock yet. But I would see that as being a condition in my mind.
I'm going to refer you to Judge Marshall Berger's decision in the case of Green versus Richfield zoning many years ago under the portal housing plan, where he said, if the condition of the road that exists before construction even begins is a problem, you better check your board of select because they have an obligation under the law to correct dangerous condition. That rock quietly honestly should be addressed now, not wait for my client to build a project. I drive that road. I'm a fairly regular patient, so I know what you're talking about. But, you know, it's been there all these years and.
It has. I would agree. I would agree.
Yeah.
Certainly it has, but I also think now you're going to ask more, you're going to put more traffic in there. And, and I know the traffic survey says it's still class A service. That's fine, level A service, but it doesn't get rid of the fact that there's going to be more cars.
We're going to try to address it, as Steve said, in this, which may make you feel a bit better, but we don't. We petition the board of selectmen to address it anyway, because it's fun. Uh, again, on some, on, on some of the comments.
Can we just finish off the equipment?
Oh, boss was wrong.
Mr. Legnard?
Sorry. Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, a positive that's come out of this is that we're reducing the, uh, a lot of, uh, units, reducing the parking and impervious service, making this a smaller project than it was. I think that's going in the right direction. So I think we, we should have the commission somewhat agree with the developers that it is going in the right direction and it is something to work to see. And, and we'll get some of the answers to some of these other questions, I hope. Once Steve puts on and decides how much parking he does to put in there and how much, uh, product he's going to take out of there, uh, as far as, you know, the rock ledge. What's going to be moved on the site, off the site and used on the site? And those are answers that will come as he completes these new plans. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah.
I, I, I'm excited. What I also would like to see on the map and I haven't seen, I, one of the residents asked about it. And I haven't seen that it's green space on the map.
Green space?
Green space, yeah. Well, I mean.
Kenny, you always want to see green space.
Yes, I'm a, you know that. I am, I am Dick Shannon's other half. Uh, but, you know, green space, uh, with, with two bedrooms and things, you put a families and those children need to play a, a place to play, not on the road. So I'd like, I'd like that to be shown on the new map.
You don't want to.
No box.
No box.
I also had another thing I thought of. Um, you're talking about addressing the people that are two hundred and fifty feet from the blasting site. There's a lot of people that will be affected that aren't two hundred and fifty feet from the blasting site on the blasting and maintenance. Um, so that her property will be one of those that's considered. So, uh, that's one thing. Um, and I know, like, we had rock crushers behind us back in the day. I'm sure you remember that.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I could feel it and it made my house vibrate and I got a crack in my foundation, but, you know, um, and that was, you know.
But there was.
Parents drive next and we were.
Yeah, there was no pre-rock.
Stream behind and back behind it. So I'm just saying, people will be affected that are farther than two hundred and fifty feet from the blast site.
I'm with you.
Uh, before you get to your, uh, rebuttals there, attorney Marcus, I would also echo the sentiments of the safety concerns for this project. I, I, I do agree with Hannah about the investigation of the other five properties. If, if they're left on an island, then, uh, we should probably try to get that as part of this development now, um, uh, to have them access to public utilities. Uh, as far as safety goes, um, we are redoing a good chunk of this road if this project does move forward with the utilities. Um, I'd like to throw it out there as an option to see, is, is it feasible to add a sidewalk anywhere here? As people are walking down. And I think someone alluded to potentially having, uh, stop bar and stop sign and signage at the corner. I think that should be heavily investigated. It's a basically a right-hand turn, left-hand turn already. Uh, you know, you, you would stop, most people tend to stop anyway as you're approaching it. So I think that should be really thought through. Uh, but getting the sidewalks there, I know some people there that do like to walk from here to downtown. That's the, one of the charms of living on Taylor Ave, is you can walk downtown to restaurants from there without having to take your car. So if we can start to connect that protections down that way, I think it would be, uh, a worthwhile, uh, venture there.
Your question is, you can walk there without taking your car. Can you walk there without taking your life? That's what you want. I agree. I agree. Mr. Judge, uh, we're just quickly on some of these comments, because, uh, a lot of them we're already aware of. Uh, we keep talking about air quality and any developer, any builder in the town of Bethel, if they use blasting or they don't use blasting, has to meet the air quality standards of the town of Bethel. So generally speaking, I don't think Bethel has any air quality standards. You're requiring, you're, you're relying on the federal EPA standards. So again, Kenny raised that in terms of, well, if you have, uh, you know, a hundred trucks a day coming in and out of the site and they're diesel trucks, you know, what's the impact on the air quality? The fact of the matter is, there are, you'd have to establish what the baseline is for the air quality without the trucks. And then you'd have to try and figure out, you know, what standard you're trying to accomplish. Because theoretically, diesel engines are supposed to meet certain emission standards set by the federal EPA. So I hear, everybody talks about air quality standards all the time. I'm, I'm all for it. It's great. We ought to focus on adopting what they really should be if they're other than the federal standards and they apply to everybody. We, we definitely, every contractor has to be the air quality standards. And if you have dust on a site, you have to have dust control. And if you're blasting, you have to blast, you have to contain any particles that would come from the blast. So I'm with you on all that. But that word is thrown out a little bit by the commission, a lot by the public. And to the extent that there's a standard that you feel that we need to meet, that we're not aware of, which would be the federal standards, you know, let us know.
Or D E P, D E E P state standard, which we could find out.
Yeah, the state really, really adopts EPA, but that's, yeah, so it, uh, uh, we use that language a lot. And the fact of the matter is, every builder, every developer, including this site, needs to maintain the air quality. Um.
Can I just add to that just for one second before you go off topic?
Sure. Um. You want me to get to water quality?
Yeah, okay. But as far as air quality, we have that process in the past about air quality and dust investigation, things of that nature. And we've always had to call the, to come in and do the monitoring. So D E P does do monitoring on request by towns, even though Neil's correct, we do not have an air quality thing. But I know of one instance where they, we have had to follow.
Yeah, and we, and I've dealt with that and we.
Yeah.
Meet their standards where that's the case.
We do have it.
But the, uh, the other thing is.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
So I, I want everybody to kind of picture this. So we have a narrow site. Okay, and we do the controlled blasting and now we bring in the bucket loaders and earth movers. And we have a truck that comes to be loaded. And then we have another truck idling outside, waiting to get on the site. Maybe only one, maybe two for a total of three. But there's a lot of equipment that's going to be running and burning fuel. And that's, I, I want people to say, oh, well, you know, we're only going to have one truck for half an hour. That, that doesn't address the issue, the potential issue.
Actually, there's standards now that say that you can't idle your trucks, um, on sites. And delivery trucks used to, you know, all over, every, delivery trucks used to pull up and deliver and idle for half an hour. Well, they can't do that anymore. It's illegal. But, uh, you're right, that, that's a consideration. And actually, it's a condition that should apply to almost every approval you do, whether it's affordable housing or just general, that got to maintain those standards. And I agree, no argument, no argument. Uh, and, uh, the same thing, you, you actually mentioned that you were concerned about, about water quality. Uh, you know, water quality, I assume you mean surface water quality, what's, what's going to run off with silt and whatever. I mean, we're going to have to meet the state standards as well on that. And that would be Steve's, uh, range of some plans. So we'll address.
Inavailability, right? Because you get a blast, you break the, uh, rot bed. It drains slowly and two years later, there is no water in the aquifer.
Yeah, that's.
You're dealing with wells up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're, uh, we'll make.
That surface runoff.
The good news is that ultimately the city water nearby is backup. So, but it's expensive to connect to it. I understand that. But, uh, the other question, blasting report, air quality. Yeah, I think, you know, uh, police report, we'll, Kenny, we'll, we'll take a look at that police report and try to address it in further detail. No question about that. Um, and again, the comments seem to be the same. We got to give you an idea of how many trucks, what impact truck traffic and how we're going to control it on the site and on the road. We'll look at all that. We, yeah, we're aware and they're not, they're not unapplied. We'll give you the questions, we'll give you the answers. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Trekkus?
Uh, yes, um, just to address a couple of points. You know, all the runoff from the impervious areas on this site go to one of two stormwater systems. Where both water quality is addressed by what's using what's called an isolator row. And then the water is infiltrating into well-drained stands or well-drained sand and gravel on this site. Uh, so there's no discharges from this site. Um, regarding impact of blasting, which here, we're, the, the rock is really above grade here. Um, the cut below will be the average grade around the ledge outcrop is only three or four feet. So blasting, that kind of depth is not going to affect, you know, nearby wells in any shape or form. I've had many sites where blasting has been done within thirty, forty feet of a well with absolutely no impact to it. You know, we're not doing a cut like an accord where you're doing, you know, a hundred-foot cut of rock below grade. Um, regarding the sanitary sewer and water, we are extending it up to our southern property line. If the Public Utilities Commission wants to extend it further south on Taylor Avenue, um, that's on them. Uh, you know, we're bringing it all the way up from in front of Mr. Draper's, uh, likely through rock on Taylor Avenue, you know, all the way up to our site, and then it will all be repaved, um, because the lines have to be separated. Um, but, you know, there's, your mapping, the town mapping does show the sewer district extending south of our site. And if Public Utilities wishes to extend it, uh, beyond our site, that's, uh, you know, they can do that. You know, we're bringing it up to our southern property line, which is our obligation to provide access to this particular site. Um, a geotechnical consultant does not get involved with removal of rock. A geotechnical consultant is to do borings on the site in order to design foundations or structural support systems for a building. That is what they do. I worked with many geotech engineers, uh, soil testing in Oxford for one, uh, geo designs out of Middlebury for another. Um, and that's what they do. Um, the blasting survey is a generic survey. I, I guess Dave Ambrosia didn't change Bristol to Bethel, but it doesn't change. That's how the blasting gets done. And again, you know, the fire marshal, you know, will determine the, you know, the limit of pre-blast surveys. Um, you know, I've had houses where they blasted adjacent to an existing foundation and never even shook the existing house. So, you know, it, it's how you blast the rock is how you control it. Um, and I would agree with Attorney Marcus that you don't want to hammer this rock out. I had a site in New York State where they were hammering out for a detention basin. And it was weeks of just banging on rock, for lack of a better term. I mean, it's one of the most obnoxious ways of getting rid of rock. The blasting here, you know, again, as I said, is drilled, there's small, their holes are close proximity. And then there are small charges set off on microsecond timing where it cracks the rock in place. Um, we have an erosion control plan during the construction period. And then, you know, and that will keep, you know, uh, you know, dust down if we do have dust, which is unlikely on this site. Because the material, it gets watered down every day or multiple times a day. Um, a site I, in the New York area, we had really silt, almost clay soils. And that had to be watered literally every two hours because those soil particles are so small, they just go right in, you know, suspension in the air. If you rode a bicycle over it, you have a dust trail behind you. Um, sand and gravel does not move very much at all, uh, when you drive over it. Um, and I will get these plans done in that, in the time period. Um, I, you know, I have the layout. It's a matter of, you know, tweaking it, you know, uh, with the additional units and providing the information. The, in the regard to the police report, uh, the traffic report was the primary response to their concerns. Um, but we'll go through it as Attorney Marcus said, but that was their primary concern. Most of the rock at the corner on Taylor Avenue is within the road right of way. So that would be, you know, if as long as the town gives, uh, uh, Mr. Delorio the, you know, the ability to cut it back within their property, it will get cut back. Um, again, stop signs at that intersection, uh, like Attorney Marcus, I've driven on this road since my early twenties, which was a long, long time ago. And, you know, again, stop signs would depend, would be at the. And, you know, again, stop signs would be at the jurisdiction of your police department. You know, if they wanted to put them in there. Um, I don't disagree that they could be valuable there, but. That's the police department's call. Um, unfortunately, not our call. We can't put traffic controls on a town road without. You know, the police department blessing that. So we will address, you know. You know, all the comments and get your revised plans as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Uh, is it appropriate? I think one of the questions the applicants have tonight, if we are okay with moving forward in this direction, should we do a consensus?
I would do a consensus, yes.
We'd take a consensus vote if if this is a a plan, uh, that we. Were okay with the applicant moving forward investigating.
Yeah.
Kenny?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Katie, Diane?
No.
Yes.
Uh, Bob?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing for this will be continued till our next scheduled meeting, which is April twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Things weren't addressed, need to still be addressed.
Yes.
Because I I didn't hear anybody address. My my question last week or two weeks ago about not addressing the health department letter. Um, and the trucks not being included in the traffic study during the. Right, but they didn't do it to begin with, so it's not in there. It is, and they haven't addressed it.
Thank you, Attorney Marcus.
Thank you.
Your chance.
Yep, go back up here. All right. We're gonna move. He just got a glass of water. Uh, we're gonna open the public hearing for Jar Associates LLC, one eighty five Grassland Lane Tree, Site Plan and Special Park. You moved it two years.
Yeah. But you you will need to read the public notice for that first, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
To appear March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, April fourth, twenty twenty five, public notes. The vessel planning and zoning commission hold the public hearing on April eighth, twenty twenty four, meeting room date. Of the municipal central one school street, South of Connecticut at seven P M. To hear the following. Jar Associates LLC property located at one eighty five Grassy Plain Street. For a youth volleyball facility, site plan and special permit. The property can be found in the accessory records as Nat ten, three and lot one fifty one. A link to view the materials can be found in the town's website. The public may send comments via regular. Mail and email to land use at vesselct.gov. Talking for the hearings, okay, the building, Paul Stanley, chairman.
Thanks, Steve. Where's yours?
Yes.
Okay, where's yours?
My name is Don Mr. Mary. Live on Walt Patrick Hill Road, Rose Valley, and super excited to. Start hopefully this project. Um, the building is already up, so that. Um, but, um. So I run C S volleyball, which is a volleyball club. I run it out of Connecticut right now at a booster school. We ran it out of there for about eleven, twelve years and. It was time for. Our own place. Uh, we've been growing. We have a lot of youth athletes. And I'm a clinic coach at Richfield High School, been there for about sixteen years, but I've coached. Um, I've been a varsity Connecticut high school coach for about nineteen years. And living in Bethel, obviously, and driving all the way to the end. We know that it's far, but, uh, once this opportunity. Rose, uh, with a building right in my hometown, I just thought it'd be great to start, if I'm going to start something, um. To do it right here. So, um, and, you know, to give back, I grew up playing sports. At Bethel, I was captain of the volleyball, basketball and tennis team. So, uh, which I'm really proud of. And like kids making fun of me, they're like, wow. I'm like, I did that in the wildcat. I wore the maroon crowd. But, um, so, yeah, super excited to just bring something to town. Um, the location on Grassy Plain, I think it's great because it's not going to really cause up anything downtown per se. However. If, um, kids are getting dropped off and the parents want to go get something to eat, there's so many great food options, way more than there were when I was in. High school, um, right now downtown. So it's great. I think it will help out not only, you know, youth athletes, families they want to tend, but also. Uh, bring families into the town. And again, downtown has grown so much. It's so cute now. I felt like growing up, I never thought that I would be back here living and supporting my family here, but I'm glad I did and. Yep.
Thank you, thank you. Um, do we have, is there, um. David, is there, can you bring up a site plan?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes. Would you mind just walking us through it? Walking us through the plane? Yeah, would you mind?
So, um, as you can see, the building layout, um, the volleyball courts. Oh, go standard. Okay, so, um. These are the volleyball courts here. And then if we'd like to, I mean, I'd love to get some youth basketball, maybe, you know, Saturday mornings, whatever. So we. Um, there is space for, you know, basketball, volleyball, obviously, and of course. Maybe even a little pickleball. There's nothing in the area. Um, we're always traveling to other towns to play. So, um, especially in the winters, so we could put some pickleball courts like sideways. But anyways, um. These are the entrances here, but we're probably going to keep this one closed off just because there's going to be a lot of kids. So, um. Parents, you know, can just drop off in here. I wanted a nice big like reception area that way. Parents did want to stay, but for the most part, for our programs, our parents don't stay. It's really they drop off their kids and, um, they go off. And then, um. It was important for us to have, um, for example. Bathrooms with the doors inside. That way, if kids, you know, went into the bathroom, we didn't want. Doors over here. We were really thinking about the safety. That's most important for me anyways. Um, if I'm going to have kids in the building, I want to make sure that there is no exit way for them. Um, so there's, I mean. Right now, my plan is to just have these doors remain open and closed. This one's going to remain locked. Just because the lavatories are over here and then these will be the public, the bathrooms for any parents, for example, if they decide to stay. So, um, the reception area as you walk in, there'll be a little parents viewing area with. A little glass window here. So if they want to watch their kids play, they can. But again, for the most part, the last ten, twelve years, a lot of parents don't stay. They drop off and.
Go downtown and get something to eat.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Um. We're going to have a little team room area, I think, uh, team bonding and having the kids just being together is important. Little weight room area. Coach's room for the coaches. If, um, you know, they're waiting to get on court with their teams, they have a place to go. And then, um, again, the three courts. And, uh, well, we'll plan to have three volleyball courts. Um, at any given time, we'll probably have, um, our club runs from. U nine to U eighteen, high school seniors. So for the most part, the only ones that are actually driving. Or would be driving to the facility are seniors. Um, but a lot of them do carpool because they're all coming from the same towns. But, um, so, yeah, the area you walk in through here and then the courts will be, um, right ahead. We'll have three courts, like I said, most of the time each team, club team usually has between nine and eleven kids. And then. We'll have, uh, no more than, you know, three or four coaches. Um, and they're the ones that will be driving in. Obviously, they have to stay with the with the kids. So we are planning to just have, um, the coaches. Park in the back on the driveway area and just come in through the back. But.
Excellent. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. Uh, does there any public questions? Any questions anyone in public? Yes, sir. What up in your name?
Uh, Jeff Jones.
And your addresser?
Uh, fourteen Druid Lane. I'm simply here to advocate for pickleball. Just just found out about this, uh. Today, I think, yeah. And I was hoping more people would would come. Um. But we too. Not as long as you have, but we've been looking for a place to play indoors. And, uh, we even came into the building and measured the, is it the community room? When you first come into the building here? Uh, it's not quite. Long enough. So that's that. I have several questions, but I think we could probably just talk about that just amongst ourselves. Does it, does you mentioned pickleball, so.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else here? Any questions or comments? Anyone online? How many questions or comments?
I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Any, uh, Kenny?
Sounds like a great plan.
True.
Very great. I go to it's a great new activity now here, so.
And so, did the kids come from pool areas?
They do. I have a lot of, you know, it's all F U C kids. So Dan Mary Bethel, Brookfield. But I do have, you know, coaching in the ASIAC, um. I have girls from Bearfield area, New Canaan, Greenwich. I'm sorry, what is it?
We call it downtown. You're Bethel girl. You know what we call it.
And and Bernie gave you this building or you built it yourself?
No, um, Jar Associates.
And great for the kids.
That's all right. Excited to bring something for kids.
I thought we were familiar because my daughter plays volleyball, so in high school. Um, my question, they are just looking through the window. You're not having any, any.
No, um, all my coaches, myself, all my staff, we're safe sport. I like. If we're having. Anything club, you know, if it's something like pickleball, I don't, you know, and they're coming in maybe with their children. You know, but when it's not my own kids and I have a group of, you know, I coach right now U twelve. Club volleyball. And when they're together, I don't, you know, safety reasons. Parents can wait outside and they'll 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 be right there in the window. But again, I've been running a club now for about thirteen years and very rarely. I mean, I have one father who drives like forty five minutes, so he sits down on his laptop, like on the stairwell. But for the most part, you know, they drop off and go, so.
Fantastic positive use. Bring people in. Serve them some food. Get out. No, it's fantastic. Nice idea.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and and good for you for for the ambition to do that. It's awesome. Um, this is probably something that you've thought of a million times already, but just going to throw it out there. I know when they were redoing the, uh, gym floor at the middle school, they were super strategic about the lines, right? That like really affected the use and how many different uses they could have for that space. So just something to kind of float your way, you know, knowing that there was going to be a demand for other things like. That that's that's going to be, I I saw it after space and just how to make it as efficient as possible, get as many people in as. Sounds like.
When Richfield High School, we did the gym, the basketball coach and myself were brought in to see, you know, how we could. And so, yeah, no, I know already, you know. Yes, I get it.
Have an extra space for us.
Uh, excellent. Um, I appreciate the, uh, the effort you're putting into the thought, just just like the. The layout of the restrooms, for instance. Um, that was just, it knows, it shows that you know kind of what you're doing and setting this up. Um, and I appreciate the investment in our town and, um. Wish you the best of luck. Look forward to improvements. Uh, Mr. Lagnar, do you have anything?
Uh, another positive thing for Bethel to have in the town availability for the kids to do. I think it's a good, good, good plan, something that's well thought out. And, uh. Hopefully, uh, Bethel kids will get a redo straight.
All right, so there's no other public comments. Um, do you have anything staff? You have something?
No, I don't know.
Um.
David?
David, you have anything?
Uh, the comments are in the Google Drive from the fire marshal and the health department. They're pretty self-explanatory. My comments are in there too. I would just like to, uh, expound on one if the commission would indulge me briefly.
Sure.
Okay, ju- just while we're talking about, um, who would be using the facility, I know it's. It's it's the majority of the activities would be catered towards youth. Not a problem, understood. In the event that, um, there are adult activities offered. Where you are curious about who else may be driving themselves to partake in what's offered there. Just be cognizant of what your parking requirements are. If we don't have an exact number. On the number of participants that would be on the floor at any one time, there is something in the regs that says. You have to provide one space per participant. So just figure we get that on the record now. Saves us grief later when we're going through the zoning application and we have to figure that out in the plans. Thanks.
Thank you, David.
Can I just comment?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Jones.
We're just a bunch of big kids. We're older.
I agree with you totally.
All right, uh, anything else?
Uh, I'll make a motion to close one eighty five Grassland Lane Tree.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? An extension? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That public hearing is closed. We'll move on to. Uh, David Roberts, Mar Ortiz, one seventeen Chestnut Ridge Road, Resubdivision.
The year March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, and it's four twenty twenty five. Public note, the vessel planning and zoning commission will hold a public night on April fourth, twenty twenty five, and. Municipal Central One School Street, South of Connecticut, at seven P M. To hear the following. Excuse me, David Roberts, Mayor Ortiz, property located at one seventeen Chestnut Ridge Road for resubdivision. This property can be found in the accessory records as Nat thirty two, block forty nine and lot lot eighteen. A link to view the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail. An email to land use at vesselct.gov. Talking for the hearings, okay, the building, Paul Stanley.
Thank you. Are there anyone here for the?
There will not be tonight, Mr. Chairman, and I will explain why.
All right, David, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, I spoke to, uh, the applicant's project engineer today, uh, Scott Lukowski from. Uh, Dymar. Um, the In the Wetlands Commission is concurrently reviewing an application for the subdivision. And, uh, they opened their site plan review at their last meeting, which was before yours. On March twenty fourth, uh, they asked for, um. The project engineer to re-review their engineering calc. Uh, some of you may recall, this sub, this resubdivision application was presented to you a few years ago. The reason why it's back before you now is because the time period for them to file the MYLAR. To record the subdivision lapsed. So, uh, they have to go through the process again. Um, but using, uh, today's standards for stormwater. So that's why the Wetlands Commission asked for them to redo their, uh, engineering. We're looking to, the In the Wetlands Commission is looking to wrap up their site plan review. Ideally for their next meeting on March, on, excuse me, April twenty eighth. Um, so the soonest you guys could render a decision on this would be during your regular meeting on May thirteenth. Uh, with that said, uh, they chose instead of, uh, trying to present this all to you guys tonight, they want to give. Um. Uh, the town's engineering consultant, S L R, a chance to look at the, uh, plans to offer. the Towns Engineering Consultant SLR a chance to look at the plans to offer feedback on the calc. And assuming that everything is finalized the way it should be and then those substantial revisions are made, they'll be able to present the plans that they gave the Wetlands Commission on the 22nd. And it should be a pretty straightforward process. But they're not appearing tonight under the pretense that you guys will immediately continue this to your next meeting on the 22nd. Any questions?
Yeah, we're, we're going to demonstrate questions with this.
No, no, you just opened your public hearing tonight, so you guys have plenty of time.
So we'll just continue that to our next regular meeting? Thank you, David. All right.
You're welcome.
We will move into our business meeting and I believe we have a full house tonight. So has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting? I have a motion to accept those?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. We have an invoice paid to Mercy Media Group for $525.75 for public noticing. Motion to pay that? I'll make the second. All in favor? Any opposed? Extensions? Motion passes. All right. We're moving to our work session. We have upstream properties to LLC 48 Stony Hill Road, amended site plan.
Did we send the notice to Copper Square?
We did. We did send a letter to the president of the HOA.
I'm the vice president.
Oh, excellent. Make sure.
Just inviting them, letting them know about tonight's meeting and inviting them to comment if they, if they so choose. So with that being said, Peter, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Amanda, would you please bring up my presentation? Good evening, Peter Olson. I'm the applicant upstream properties to LLC. They are represented on Zoom by Gary Michael Senior and Bob Wilson. And in the room by Gary Michael Junior sitting in the back, Richmond Kuzo, unfortunately, is out of town. The property we're talking about tonight is 48 Stony Hill Road, which is owned by upstream property to LLC. They're the developer. The parcel that we're talking about is the front parcel right along Route 6. Thank you very much, Amanda.
I'll give you, I'll give you the mouse so you can do it.
The power is. This is the last piece of the Tony's Restaurant, Stony Hill in.
Just, just hit the.
The last piece of the Tony's Restaurant, Stony Hill, involved quest parcel. Maplewood was the first piece that was developed.
Yes.
Your hat.
Thank you.
Please text later.
Please continue. Maplewood was the first piece of this that we've developed, then both pieces of Copper Square. Then the playing field in the back was donated to the town. And this is the last piece. This was originally approved in 2013. It's used in development, residential, that never really got off the ground. And so in 2021 and 2022, the current property on the upstream properties came to the commission. First for an overlay district of the Stony Hill mixed-use overlay district to allow the development that you see on the screen before you. And that development was ultimately approved in 2022. The district has an affordability requirement that requires both 80 and 60%. That results in about 24% of the total units being affordable in this district. There's also a requirement that some commercial development be provided. That was provided for in the two front buildings that you see there. And I zoom in a little bit on my next slide. All right. Well, this is a multi-page document, I guess. All this is, is a zoomed in version of the site plan. We prepared a sort of revision to the site plan that emphasized the buildings that we're proposing to change. I made them dark gray and changed some of the. So the reason we're here before you, I guess I should take a quick step back. We came before you a month ago. We had a pre-application meeting under 7-159B of the statutes, which allows discussion of the development of land with the commission and an applicant without anybody being held for anything that's said through the meeting essentially. But as a result of that meeting, what we did was we made an application for an amended site plan that would allow us to implement what we proposed to do. As part of that amended site plan, we submitted this document which shows you the changes. There is no proposed change to the site plan itself, to the drainage, to the parking, to the drive aisles, landscaping, any other things. The only changes that we're proposing is to take the two front commercial buildings and reduce them in height by one story, eliminating the second story, the two-story buildings. And then take the building in the back, Building B, which was proposed at three stories, and add stories to it, so it's a four-story building. And take the eight residential units that were proposed for the front buildings and move them to the rear building. We're not adding any additional units. We're not changing the ratio of affordable units in any way. We're simply moving the units from one building to another. And as I said, there's no physical change to the site plan itself. So the concern we're running into and the reason we're making this request is that we're having difficulty finding tenants for the front commercial buildings. This applies to both the commercial side, where we're being told by people that they don't want to have residents above them. And on the residential side, we're being told by the residents they don't want to have commercials below. Residents also would prefer to be closer to the amenities that are essentially located in front of the, the largest building in the back right corner, which has a swimming pool and a clubhouse and all the same. And not have to cross the territory altogether. We've had conversations with restaurants who would like to come here and just, they just don't want to deal with the residents above them. You know, odor, noise, whatever, we can just avoid getting those. So as I said, our proposal is to take those eight residential units out of those two buildings and move them to the rear. You may remember, this was the artistic rendering of the front buildings. There's only one of them, but they do the identical that we presented as part of the original application that the commission approved. We can see the front facade here with the second story and the rear facade. We have the figures. We've submitted the elevation that shows you what the building will look like, which is functionally the same thing if you just put the roof line and scratch it down. I have story. I'm not sure if you have a different copy.
My God.
Yeah, and it's, it draws itself as you. Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's the one.
I'm sorry, Peter, is that your presentation or Beth's?
That's my presentation. The problem is, you know, the elevation P V S. So you can see in the top, the top of that, we've essentially just scratched it down by a third. On the rear, we didn't submit an elevation, but it's essentially the same thing, but we're not continuing to have those stairs and the balcony because there's no residence needed for the second floor in the rear. So it would just be a roof over an angle, the commercial spaces. And then the building in the back is the same, it's functionally the same as the other two. The 70 unit building in the back right. I see one of our longtime commission members is making noises about something, so I figured I'd wait to hear it.
I, I, I don't understand this drawing. This, this one here, this is the one you're putting in the back?
Correct.
This is three-story, four? Then what is this here?
This is the front building.
I know, but what is this?
They're just dormers in the roof. There's no actual space.
Do you look at that somewhere to the top part?
I know, but it's, but there's nothing up there and it's not going to be, so it's only going to be one on the bottom.
Yeah, it's just a decorative feature. I mean, maybe there's an attic there, but there's no actually usable space up there.
What's the height differential between the two?
On the front building or the rear building? The front building is about 10 feet lower, 10 feet lower. Yeah, because each, each floor is functionally. So by reducing that second floor, it goes down 10 feet.
And by adding a floor, you're adding 10 feet to the back.
Exactly right. So the Stony Hill mixed-overlay district was removed from the regulations by you. But the development remains subject to the terms and provisions of the overlay district. As a, so the four stories is allowed and you can approve this as essentially in conformance with the original.
Can you explain that? Initially, you didn't, you used a different term initially in your first letter and then changed.
Non-conforming.
Right.
Is the appropriate word for what our condition is, that non-conforming uses, structures, and parcels are not affected by subsequent provisions to the zoning regulations. And so our position is this entire development is protected from the change that was made in September 2022 to delete the regulations from the text of the, to delete the text from the zoning regulations.
Do you think the four-story building in the back should still be allowed?
Still be allowed, correct.
You have 12 feet from, from the building to Copper Square.
That's correct.
I did not realize when we talked about this.
The, the original building was 12 feet. It's true.
Yes, that, that's a big, big difference.
I think you, can you also explain, you said in your letter of March 19, that zone has since been removed from the zoning regulations, but the zoning map has not been amended.
That's correct.
As such, the overlay zone still applies.
That's correct. You have not changed your zoning map. This property is still within the Stony Hill mixed-use overlay district. So there, there may not be text in the regulations currently that says what that is, but it's still in the zone. So there has to be something to support what the zone is. And that something is what was the zone at the time. So even though it's not currently in the zone, it still exists as it was. Only applied to our property. Nobody else can make an application to apply it to their property. But our property is still in the Stony Hill mixed-use overlay district, which has the provisions of this up.
Beth, this is not a public hearing, correct?
No, but just to remind the commission that we did invite Copper Square to this meeting to discuss anything regarding the elevations of the proposed changes in the building. If you want, I can refresh. I'm, I'm sure that everybody here is understanding that the site plan itself is not under scrutiny. It's just these two structures and the elevations pertaining to those two structures. In the Google Tribe, you'll find a memo from the Fire Marshal who went out to the site to ensure that there was proper distances between the building and the line in order to get the aerial truck back there if need be. And also there is a memo from me in the Google Tribe stating that I went out and looked at the area where this particular building is. They have the footings in and the foundations and such. And I found no violations of the site plan since the building was under construction.
So Beth, did you just mention that we'd received a memo from Tom Gallagher?
It should be in the drive.
Okay, I did want to make one correction. The, the distance from the property line to the building is 20.2 feet. That's the plan you can see right there.
Beth, so is the representative?
Oh, yes, yes.
Are you talking about?
Anyone who was from County Square?
Yeah, Mitch Heller, Vice President. Obviously, we voiced our concerns with this whole project from the beginning. We're rolling with it. We're doing what we have to with defenses. Mitch Heller, 419 Copper Square. I'm here on behalf of the Association as the Vice President. And specifically, the eight units that are going to be directly affected by this change that goes through. From the beginning, we've always been here to voice our opinions, specifically Building B. And even some of you that were on the commission back then voiced the same opinions about that building being too close to our building, whether it's in regulation or not. So much so that you guys had them move that building a little bit further away from ours with the idea that it was three stories. Well, like Beth just said, the footing and the foundation is already poured. So if you guys had concerns originally with a three-story building, making them move further away, now we're going to add another floor. You can't, you can't move them any further. But that's just, that's just part of it. Their foundation is 15 yards away from my back patio. You add a second, you add a fourth floor, it's going to probably eliminate any sun that we're going to get back to back there. It's going to overshadow. Our third, our master bedroom is on the third floor. And they all have porches in all their units. So that's going to be now two floors of light shining to our bedroom, 15 yards away. So on behalf of the Association, we don't think that this should go through. By approving it, it's only going to hurt us. They want to sit here and say, oh, well, we can't find tenants. Nobody wants to move in. How many places in Bethel are there tenants above restaurants and mixed use all over, like just downtown? That's just an excuse that they're going to use. It's hurting us. It's not going to hurt them. They're going to go through the development one way or the other. I mean, what you guys are, so when you look at it and you weigh those options, you're hurting us, not them. That building is extremely close. They want to say they didn't get an air on the truck back there. Okay, maybe to help us, but it's not going to be able to help their property. That's all I have to say. So we request that it's denied on behalf of the Association. Thank you.
So we'll start down here.
I think any developer has the right to change all their plans as long as they're reasonable and they go along with regulations. I think, I consider reasonable.
I'm having a hard time with it just, just from the fact that four stories, when you look at that overall site plan and the other building kind of parking and driveways that kind of give a little bit of a buffer there. I do agree with the comments that there are restaurants downtown here that have residents above them. There's quite a few of them. And it seems to work out for all those restaurants. I'm sure there's complaints, just like anything else there is. So for me, I'm having a hard time understanding the, the, the real reason to move it, move it forward. I, I, I think you would. It's kind of a build it, if you build it, they'll come. You don't have those, those spots up right now. So there's really no proof to say someone, you know, if, if you're dealing with a lot of on paper. So that's my opinion.
Which restaurant's downtown?
The, well, we, we've got.
Jacklins is the only one I can think of.
Jacklins? Yep. And then we've got.
You just lost one downtown.
Which one's that?
Burning Bites.
Okay.
Not under agents, but.
No, understood. But there, there are.
Jesse Plain Street. I can't think of the name of the old Tinelli's restaurant. Jerko's has apartments above it. You asked the question. You asked the question.
I didn't visualize what was up.
Downtown. You also have Cafe Duo, which is in. I'm just answering the question.
I just made the.
Well, listen, there's, there's other tenants, whether it's restaurants and other, you know, there's also office spaces above of restaurants. So you have mixed use and understand.
We brought to you the concern that we're struggling with this.
How is your occupancy rate on the other buildings right now?
So we're at 90% in the residential.
And those are built.
But those are just residential apartments and, you know, people will move in when they're available. The commercial, we're trying to build them to suit essentially. And, you know, if we have a restaurant that says to us, we'd like to come in there, that's, that's great. That answers the problem. But right now, that's what people are telling us. But right now, that's what people are telling us. And, you know, what we would like is a project that works. You know, we don't wanna build this commercial space and have it sit there empty because it's not working for anybody.
I wasn't involved when the, the original plan was approved, but hearing a little bit of the history that we did move the building forward due to concerns of the neighbors. And now we're just gonna make that a little bit worse. I just have a tough time with wrapping my head around that.
It's a good point, Mike.
Did you, did you look at, rather than having the ground floor on both those buildings, commercial, moving one above the other and making this, the other one completely residential?
No, but I think that based on conversations with the commission at that time, that having the commercial storefronted along Route 10 is difficult. So I, I mean, look, we, you know, in those meetings, we fought to reduce the amount of commercial that we had to provide because we knew it was a challenge. And this is the balance that we worked out with the commission. But we're finding those residential units in those mixed-use buildings along the road, that's starting not gonna work.
Right.
So that, that's why we're here for this reorganization.
And there's just, there's just, I, I, you've mentioned when you were there originally, it's not about a bakery and the smells would rise to the residents up above. And I just didn't understand that because there was so much commercial use on Route 6. A, a great deal. And I, I, it, it looks like an attractive area, why, especially with the residences there, that if you had something that they could go to, that, that, it, those, those commercials would be a natural draw for how many, how many apartments did you have there? You know, I really don't, I
Is, is there apartments above Pete's take across the street?
Yes, there is. And there's also, yeah, yeah, there, there's a couple. And across the street, yes, that whole line of stores there have apartments above.
Okay. So to say that that doesn't work, you have your tenant, your neighbors across the street doing that.
But we don't know the quality of those apartments. We don't know the rental values of those apartments.
But you've just said it doesn't work.
It doesn't work. Works across the street. The bakery that came to us that said, we'd like to go
That's one.
Said
I'm also in the development. We, we, I work for a company that developed Exit 10, where Starbucks is. And we built that whole thing without having anybody. That's what happens when you build the building. People come in. I, I'm having a hard time feeling bad for developers trying to just make more money because it's the easier path. We approved a site plan. Now I'm just starting to get a little bit even more on the other side. I apologize, but I, I can sympathize with the people that are buying their units behind you. And now they're, they're gonna have like an even taller building in front of them. That's fine.
Diane?
I was on those, not on the commission, but I did come to those online. And I did make comments about it and was concerned about the Copper Square. A lot of the people came initially from that and they were online, all those people. And they were concerned. And I would not be happy if I was living in that, in those and had a fourth story put on that. I mean, even just having that building there is gonna be, make a difference to them. And they initially didn't have a problem with doing this. And that's the only way that they could really do this whole thing because it was mixed use, but it's affordable. And so a lot of times, you know, now they built all this, but they haven't done anything to even think about building these. So that was their way to get the residential units in. And they didn't have, you know, have a problem then when they were deciding to do that. So I, I just don't see a change that should make, I mean, they decided to do that then. I just don't see a reason to have to make a change enough.
I mean, we all see the, the financial benefit and the construction cost to the proposed change. But the reality is, we had a mixed-use commercial with residential above. Thinking at face value, the statement that says somebody is commercial, doesn't wanna deal with the neighbor upstairs complaining about the smell of the fryolator or the bread, bacon, or whatever, then you stack two residential levels on one side and two commercials on the other. It solves the, the shadow problem with, with the neighbor. And it solves the concern about, I don't wanna have a residential neighbor.
Yeah, I don't think that solves what the commission's concern at the time was, which is
But, but that's history.
You're asking us to change this now, so.
Okay, so I guess I'll make my legal argument to you. It's not a special firm and application. You don't have discretion. This is a site plan application, which means you have an administrative review. Does the site plan comply with the zoning regulations? The answer is yes. Because zoning regulations that apply in the Stony Hill mixed-use overlay district. That, that's your decision. Does it comply? Is there any basis for you to say it does not comply? So, you know, our argument to you has been, this makes common sense. This makes development sense. This makes a project that works for a project that frankly has been, you know, in the works here for 12, 12 years. 12 years I've been standing in front of the commission. Just trying to, I'm not sure Ken was on when we started, but okay, he was. Trying to get this with something that works. And the residential is working really well. So we'd like to be able to get commercial that works really well too and provides an asset for the area that provides uses that people who live with.
So based on your definition, you're, you're set, we have to prove to you that it doesn't conform.
No, you don't have to prove anything to me. I have to prove to you that it does conform. And we've done that. We've made no changes to the site plan. The only question that we are changing is adding a fourth floor to a building that's three stories in a zone that allows four-story buildings.
That was already an issue from the previous approval.
I, I mean, define issue. There's no site plan issue from that approval.
Did you not move the building forward in, in that application process?
For the application process, we probably did, but that was site plan revisions as we went through.
Because we were dealing with so close, is that, was that the reason?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
Yes, that was the reason it was moved, but this is part of the back and forth.
No, I understand. I'm, I'm trying to understand the back history of that.
So part of the back and forth with development applications is you bring somebody to the commission and you have discussions about what the commission likes and doesn't like. If you had said, well, I, I don't quite know how to put that, but there, there isn't any legal reason why we have to make that motion. We made it because we thought the commission would be responsive to that, which it was. And we got a lot of it. But, you know, having made the move, it implies to add a fourth story to that building.
Did you meet with Copper Square at the time and agree with them to not have a fourth floor on that? Because I know there were supposed to be some meetings and maybe he can talk to that because it, it seems to me that it's a bait and switch and I think, you know, later on, you just make a change.
I would completely disagree with that characterization of what's happening.
It does feel a little bit like that, though.
But that implies that we had an intention at the time.
We can't prove that. I understand, but it's just, it's
I'm telling you, it's not true. And to imply that it's something that happened is, is way beyond the pale here. That we made our application based on what the conditions were at the time and what we thought would work. And we had a lot of back and forth with the commission about what we thought would work. Having gotten, what was it approved? May of 2022. Three years later, with a lot of experience in not only building the residential and seeing what works there, but not being able to rent the commercial. And having been told by residents as well that these residential units are less desirable, we think it's appropriate to consider a change.
That, that's, I understand. I understand. That is not, to me, that, that's response, response to changing conditions. Doug, is that experience?
I do have staff.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
That's Bob, Bob Gleason, one of the owners. Can I speak? When I get a chance? We, we came, I, I guess a few weeks ago and talked about this and, and our feeling at the time and was that, you know, there was a, a positive inclination to do this. We are in no way trying to bait and switch here. We are proud of this project. It has 32 affordable units. We, we filled them up. Everybody's coming there. These are luxury apartments. People love it. What's happened here is common sense and, and as we realized this, it was being built, this is just a way better plan. To have the retail up front, it'll be much more desirable. We were always concerned about the retail use here because as you know, if you go down to the Big Y, there's 10,000 square feet that's been vacant for 10 years. We don't wanna put up a white elephant. We don't wanna build an apartment. Like you, we mentioned Pete's sake. Pete's sake, accessory apartments for people that work there. That's not the type of apartments these are gonna be. These are luxury apartments. And all the, as you looked at, you say, oh my God, the, the people living here would have their tenants over here and have their retail up here. It was simply as we got into the project, we realized it would be a better plan. That's all. We were not looking to be contentious or slip something in. That's why we're, we're here with you tonight. We, we have a long history with the town of doing what we say, with the Dolan Plaza, the Grand One and Two, and now this. And, you know, we were sincerely asking for consideration of what is a better plan. It's that simple.
Doug, did you?
Yeah, a question of staff. Has Frattoni Andres weighed in on this?
No.
Do we have an opinion?
No.
Can you give us an opinion?
No, what your commission did, they were doing this as a courtesy to the applicant by having him come in with a revised site plan. Question was, is this something that is handled administratively by staff or by the commission? And I determined that it would, it should really be handled by the commission. It was a change to a site plan. It was an amendment to a site plan. And at the same time, the commission, in conversations with the commission, just to refresh all your memories, the question rose, we should, we should let Copper Square know about this and have their input into the matter. And the reason, I believe, the reason you felt that way was you felt that it was a, a change to the site plan that needed to be discussed and addressed. You did agree that the applicant was coming in with a concept and you liked the concept at the time being. Just hearing a few of your comments this evening about the location of the building in relation to the property lines and the discussions you had before. I, I would go, I would ask Bob, he's on, on the call. I would ask Bob, why didn't you do four stories back then? I can't remember.
I, I don't remember either. I mean, I don't know, we were trying to protect a view of the pond from our people. I, I don't know. But I understand that if you're in Copper Square and you're backing up to this building, those are three-stories buildings. So those people are already gonna have a three-story building looking right across it. But I honestly didn't think, you know, and I still don't like, okay, well, if you're looking across a three-story building, there's one, there's 10 feet above that. I didn't think that was gonna be that big of a deal. And I understand if I lived there, that would, I'd rather have nothing. I totally get that. But in the long and short of this, when we started to get the resistance on this, these, this retail space, which again is very hard to rent, very hard to rent. I was like, we, it just became apparent, like, wow, if we could do this, we'll make, we'll maximize the retail space, make it that more desirable. And we'll make those apartments more desirable that we're renting because those tenants will be in part of the residential section. It's as simple as that. And, you know, I, I think that we just overlooked it and that we shouldn't have. We should have, we should have fought for four stories at that point and just done it.
Can I make a comment?
Didn't need the four stories in that building to get the number of units that we were proposing. That if we had had four stories, we would be looking for more units and that's
Yep.
That wasn't what the commission was after. I remember we were already increasing the number of residential units from the original approval and reducing the amount of commercial square footage.
Could I have a comment here?
Yeah, Mr. Legnar, please.
Okay. Two weeks ago, I did, I made the comment that I thought this was a good change to the, the site plan as it stood, as we approved it before. Because we want these things to be successful. You could, you could run it to a, a restaurant tomorrow. Pretty, pretty much now, he's out of business because he's, he's not being successful. And the same goes true for the ones above. So as, as, we're, we're here not to hurt the developers, but to try and get the best possible development that we can. It's gonna be good and last for a long time. As, as we've seen, these developers take care of Dolan Plaza and the Grand One and Two. They built them to be successful. They don't build them to lose. And, and I think, you know, that we, we have to look at that from the developer standpoint of how they're developing, you know, Route 6. We wanted the commercial property along there. We, we fought for that. And we, we, we want it to be there so that you don't have apartments right up on the edge of the road. So you have some buffer from the road to, to there, but we don't want it to be empty stores buffering the road. Thank you.
I, one quick, I'll, I'll add on to that. Any new plaza built on Route 6 is not gonna have apartments over it generally. You met, one of the commissioners mentioned Route 10 in Newtown with Starbucks. There's no apartments over that. Because you want 10-foot ceilings, you want big spaces, you want the maximum retail, you want it to make as, as to get retail to come in, it's gotta have as little barrier to entry or barrier to not liking as possible. It's just plain and simple that the retail space will be far more desirable, far more desirable at one story than with apartments above it. It's that simple. And that's what we're really experiencing firsthand. And we don't wanna have a white elephant. We don't. I'm worried about it and we don't wanna do it.
What's, what's the difference between this and something like they're doing in Brookfield at, at Four Corners? That's all retail down below with apartments, three, two, three stories of apartments above that. Like, and I know it took a, it takes a while to fill the retail up. It doesn't fill up as quickly as the residential units. You gotta find someone who's willing to do a five, 10, 15-year lease versus someone who's just doing a one-year lease.
What about across the street from here?
I, I understand the, listen, I, I, I totally get it. From a financial standpoint, from a pro, pro forma standpoint, it's the path of least resistance. It makes more sense. You can get people quicker in there. I get it. With all the respect to Mr. Legnar, I understand. I don't wanna see vacant space either here or something that doesn't work. But I wasn't involved in this mission, but I was on one of those calls when this was getting approved originally and it was talking about reducing the commercial space. And this commission fought hard to keep the commercial space and the units that were there. And I think we're just going against that. I, I know it's the same space, it's the same amount, but that was the plan of the proof. And that was just my
As I said, on Route 6, you have so much commercial space. As I said, you look across the street. There are apartment buildings and there is retail all on the bottom. There's one of those retail stores that is not filled. Every other retail store in the Wells Fargo thing is full. And it has been full.
In the Big Y shopping center?
No, no, right here. Right across the street. And it's all, it's all retail. And Big, Big Y has had that one home since it was built. I don't know why. Everything else in that has always been highly successful. The other stores in there.
Big Y, Big Y, you can't really, I'm sorry. Big Y is like downtown here. You have the Bethel Market. Their owners are real estate
Exactly.
National owners, developers, things of that nature.
Hey, how many four-story buildings are there in Copper Square?
None, that I know of.
In Copper Square?
In Copper Square, none.
None.
No, the townhouses in Copper Square are three stories. The duplexes are two.
The only four stories are the two buildings they have already.
That's what I thought. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that's on Copper Square.
And, and I can tell you, I can remember, I, I was on this commission when that was built. And the people from Copper Square were adamant about a third four-story building. They didn't want it overshadowing all of their, all of their, their condos. I remember it vividly.
And you guys were supposedly meeting with them offline. You're making arrangements. So I don't know exactly what happened because we didn't Yeah, thanks.
Chairman, may I make a comment, please?
Please.
Paying our ex officio, officer selectus. You know, one thing about that area, as you just mentioned, is the importance of having some commercial. And I think that we need that commercial along there because someday it's gonna come back. But we, we need people to have places to go along Stony Hill. I think we need to give a lot of difference to them about the kind of commercial we put up. You know, it's, it's not the same apartment as like downtown when you're living above a commercial in the little downtown, those apartments go for a lot less money. They're very quaint. It's a different kind of commercial. If you want something along Stony Hill and they need more room, I just think we need to be reasonable about that thought because I do think we need more commercial along Route 6. We've kinda missed the boat on that a little bit. And I do believe it'll come back eventually. And we should do everything we can to support it from that perspective. So I just keep that in mind as you guys move along and make your decisions. I think commercials are important up there.
Could we ask the Vice President to talk again?
I mean, not to get down to the technicality or the law here, but didn't you say I mean, not to get down to the technicality or the law here, but didn't you say we have no say on this?
Well, that's not what I said.
No, my words.
But I lied, but that's not what I said.
I am far from your comments.
Our approach to this has been to come to the commission and say, this is a common sense approach that we would like you to buy in on and approve it. And that's why we started with a pre-application meeting to take your temperature, see what you thought. We liked what we heard. So we came forward with a site plan application. Staff recommended that it be a formal site plan application. The commission recommended it be a formal site plan application.
Site plan amendment.
Site plan amendment, right. Application for site plan.
Amendment.
Amendment, but sort of like, I didn't feel like arguing about that. I don't think it really needs one because there's no actual site plan changes. The only change is architecture, buildings. That, that's not a site plan. But we didn't argue. We made the application. We came back to you now a month later. Um, so I've tried to do this as a cooperative process and I didn't want to have to be the big bad lawyer and lay down what I think the law is, which is it's a site plan. And site plan review for you is administrative in nature. What that means is you look at the regulations. If it follows the regulations, you have to approve it. That's the case for subdivisions, subdivision administrative in nature. The problem is that nearly every application that you get for a site plan approval is coupled with a special permit. Right? Every building over fifteen hundred square feet in size, that's commercial, needs a special permit. Everything that requires segregation needs a special permit. When we want parking changes, we need a special permit. So you're used to getting applications where you have discretion over the entire application. It's unusual when you're not just a site plan. Site plans are administrative in nature. Does it comply with the regulations? And our position is that it complies with the Sony Hill mixed-use overlay district, which applies to the property.
Okay, so, but now I'll use my words. I won't attribute them to you. If the commission takes a consensus vote and it's voted no, you still can go ahead and do it.
Go ahead and do what?
Put the fourth floor.
No.
No.
No, I don't think we can at this point. I don't think the staff would issue a zoning permit for it.
No, we wouldn't. I wouldn't.
And I misunderstood what you meant by before.
Okay, what, what do you think I meant?
This was just a courtesy presentation.
Like I said, well, maybe, maybe I'll take a step back. I could go both ways on whether the change that we're asking for requires a site plan. I don't think it does, but staff thinks it does. So they're the ones who are gonna make the decision. They won't sign off on a zoning permit for our building. If we make that application. Do we have remedies after that? Sure. But, you know, in a year and a half or two years, some court's gonna tell us who is right or not. And by then, we would have had the building done. So we're, yeah. I, I can't speak for my clients, but that's not a direction we're gonna go. If, if that, that's the result we're gonna get. So the, the difference is that we've made an application to you. We think there's a legal standard for the application from your review. And you should follow that legal standard.
If I could comment?
Please.
Say your name.
Yes, here. Good evening, for the record, Gary Michael Jr., Upstream Properties, two, uh, one of the owners. Just to kinda give a little bit more perspective of kind of when we got this approved and to how we're here tonight. You know, to, to speak to that, you know, bait and switch, that is, that is the last and furthest thing of how we operate and how, how we are. Uh, my father and my partner Bob and, and Richard's not present. Uh, we've been in this area for a long time. Uh, people that know us and worked with us can, can tell you that, you know. Doug, we're gonna do something. We're gonna do it. If we need to make modifications, we're gonna be transparent, you know, exactly, you know, where we stand. And that being said, I think to your point of, you know, this is what was approved. Now you're asking for this. I, in all the developments that we have, the properties that we own, we do not have any mixed use, us personally. So at the time when it was approved, it was originally approved for, I think it was probably with sixty apartments with forty thousand square feet of retailer, commercial, and we came and formally spoke to the commission about what we were gonna do going forward. And we kinda came up with the plan that's before you. The hundred and thirty-seven units, eight, eight up top and approximately ten thousand square feet of commercial. And we were excited and we still are excited about this project and, and what's transpired today. But as we've gotten further into it, as the, now the time has come to, okay, we need to start the two front buildings. And we've had conversations. And, and again, this is, I can only tell you what I know. Are there, are there mixed use projects in and around the area of the state that are successful? I'm sure there are a ton. I'm just, I can just speak to what we have gone through in this little small sample that is these two buildings. Whether it be, you know, the bakery that has expressed interest but have concerns uh, about, you know, the odors and being there early hours with people upstairs. Or a hair salon that, and, you know, in her letter of intent, you know, wanted to have a managed parking structure, which anyone knows it's, it's very difficult to, to tell people where to park, no matter what signs you have or what have it. Uh, we had someone, uh, that was, uh, in, in, in clothing, uh, wears more suits and tailored. Uh, and he wanted to have something where it could be, people would come after, after work, it'd kinda have a little lounge setting for back of, lack of a better word. Um, so there, there was concern about how the whole front buildings would flow. And, and that's come to light, again, is it a small sample size? Yes, you know, uh, it is not exit ten off Newtown, as we said. There's no apartments up there. We don't have a drive-through. We don't have a Starbucks anchoring that center where people wanna be next to. Uh, there's a Starbucks down the road, uh, from, from this project. So, um, we've had a very strong interest in a restaurant, uh, but the demand for parking and in nighttime hours wouldn't work with any number of, of residential up, up top. So, it, you know, it has, you know, I don't want to see struggles. That's not the right word, but there has been some pushback on the commercial tenants that we have. From the residential standpoint, as we said, we find that people do wanna be closer to the amenities that are on site, whether it be the clubhouse or, or the pool. So I just wanted to kinda give you a little background as to when we got it approved. We knew that we had to have some commercial component, but we didn't know, I didn't know what it was gonna be like today as relates to this mixed use site. I just wanted to provide a little color.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's good.
Please.
And I'll tell Copper Square again, all due respect, all examples that he just gave are, are site plan issues that they had originally with parking, um, really. So I just wanna make sure that you guys have that as a noted from where he just. Nothing to do with residential. He named a couple of examples, all parking issues, which they're gonna have issues. We have issues and we have garages and we have one more unit than that. So that's an invalid excuse.
Okay, Beth, uh, do you have any comments or anything to add color to this or?
Well, I don't, I, I don't, I don't feel it's appropriate to, to push hard from the legal aspects in that, in that regards. Only because when this all originally started, it started from the point of view of, let's see if we can make this work. It was very conciliatory with the commission and with yourselves. I think at this point, it's, it, you, you've heard a lot of good comment, discussion. They presented their reasons as to why the commercial hasn't been, um, investigated more, leased more, looked at more. Um, and I think that you as a commission should decide what you wanna do with this in order, and again, if I recall from the last meeting they had, they were holding off on uh, completing the foundation. Because that depends on floors and I think it's very important for you all to make a decision one way or the other. You stick with the original site plan or you entertain the changes in the elevation as they're proposed.
So is that a roll call vote? I just?
It's whatever you want it to be.
Okay.
Conceptual roll call.
Okay, we'll do a consensus vote and then we'll start over here. Kenny?
Um, I'm okay with the change.
Okay, scroll.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. I'm a no.
I'm a no. I'm a no.
I mean, yes.
Mr.?
Go slow. Are you getting no votes? Cause I'm not. Okay.
Bob Legnar, yes.
So that's, uh, it's two yeses and, uh, three nos.
There's three yeses, three noes, three yeses, three noes, one, one abstain.
Who's the other? I thought you abstained.
I did. Scroll there.
Yeah.
We had Kenny.
Oh, and Bob's a yes. Okay.
The commission doesn't have a consensus then, is that correct?
That is correct. David? Beth?
I'm the Happy Town Consul this evening. Because over twenty-four years.
We have not had this.
I believe. I believe it fails.
Melanie, where are you?
According to Robert's rules, I believe it fails. Right, I mean, it has to, it has to have actually passed. Now, was that your, is that your roll call vote or is that just your actual vote or is it consensus vote?
So the consensus vote.
All right, so your consensus is?
Split.
Yeah.
I would point out that a consensus is not a decision.
I know it is.
Number one. Number two, perhaps the commission wishes to have further deliberations to see if any members would change their decision before a final vote is taken.
What, what about the commissioner that left?
Consensus? Well, there's been a, there's been a commission member sat for.
Oh, okay, I got you. Yep, alright. I got you.
My, my point is.
Sorry about that.
A vote. So there has been made, so the commission could continue its deliberations. And perhaps anybody on the commission will change their vote one way or the other to reach a final.
I do not know if the commission, to further expand on that, I don't know if the commission wants to continue that deliberation this evening. Or at the next meeting.
I think we need a little bit of time to figure this out. No, Beth.
I leave that to you. Um, again, I would remind the commission and the applicant that the commission went out of their way to, you, you can, applicant can handle the concept. You, um, as soon as the materials were submitted, you made arrangements to listen to the concept this evening and hopefully come up to some kind of consensus. So obviously, we don't have a consensus. We have a split consensus. So you're gonna need more time in order to.
Yes.
Does the applicant understand?
Yeah, the applicant understands the discussion that you're giving.
So we can push this off through the meeting?
Well, if you push it off, do it for good reason, which is, you know, take the time to, um, to review what's in front of you, take your time to review the comments that the applicant made and also the member of Copper Square. And, um, and also look at the site itself if need be. I would make arrangements with the prop, uh, with the developer. If you wish to go on site, call me. I'll give you the information of, to reach them in regards to that. But at the same time, you do have to remember your focus is only the elevations. It is a construction site.
Okay.
All right.
Do we need anything?
So you're gonna table this to your next meeting?
Yes.
April twenty-second.
April twenty-second, we'll continue the conversation. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Mike Michael.
Mr. Legnar, yes.
Is it possible at Beth's check with, uh, uh, Chuck Andrews and make sure we're doing this right? As far as what, uh, you know, Peter was saying, is that we're there to review if it legally.
Did you hear what?
He backed us on that.
Yeah, can I, can I make a motion, take a five-minute break? Second. On favor? I oppose.
Turn the mic from back on.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Just call the meeting in order.
Call the meeting in order. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda to items real quick. We're gonna move the Correspondent Day twenty-four referral nineteen Crowbridge to next in line and uh, move Kevin Cleary, thirty D, twelve units, one oh five Milwaukee out.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Opinions? All right. Great.
Okay. Can you go ahead and we do this? Okay, Melanie O'Brien, uh, representing town of Bethel. And so we're here tonight on, um, the referral pursuant to statute section eight dash twenty-four as well as a charter, as this is a sale of town property. And the materials should have been made available to you. Uh, so the property is nineteen Crowbridge Drive, which is one of the Francis Clark Park unlots. And so you have the materials to offer itself. Um, there were a couple of contingencies that relate to your function to planning and zoning that, um, there is a, there was a contingency that, um, the seller, that the, uh, town zoning department um, approves the anticipated use of the premises for the concern of industrial units totaling sixteen thousand square feet. And that the buyer needs to receive site plan approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission and other municipal departments for said sixteen thousand square feet of, um, building space for its intended purpose. And that the buyer has to receive site plan approval as soon as possible. But no later than nine months from the date of the agreement being executed. So there are some conditions there. But otherwise, it's just a safe.
Bethany?
Not with the property owners.
I'm going to renovate.
We started, we, we started the planning process at least. So tough luck.
So we just have to make a referral? So, uh, take a roll call vote for that?
Positive re.
Positive report.
You wanna make a, issue a positive report?
Got it. Let's just take a consensus.
No, don't go make that. Oh.
I'm just kidding. Uh, Kenny?
Yes.
Me, yes. Kitty, yes.
Yes.
Diane, yes.
Yes.
Doug, yes. All right. Oh, Bob? Thank you. Now I wanna make a motion.
Could I just request that the motion statement, it's a positive report hopefully that you're voting on, um, pursuant to, um, eight dash twenty-four as well as town charter.
Did you do a motion or what did you do? No, just a roll call vote.
Just a roll call vote. You just said you wanted a consensus. If you wanted a.
Not do a motion.
All right, now we're all getting tired.
That's, I got you. Can I make a motion to approve?
Recommend.
Recommend?
Positive report.
A positive report pursuant to eight twenty-four referral and town charter?
In regards to?
In regards to nineteen Crowbridge.
Right. Second.
Second. Kenny?
Yes.
Scroll.
Yes.
Me, yes. Kitty? Yes. Diane?
Yes.
Yes.
Doug, yes. Bob?
Yes.
There we go. You passed the other thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It comes in time. What are for you guys? You pick it up in a heartbeat.
Pick it up in a heartbeat. Alright, so let's, uh, move on with the agenda. We have, next up, we have, uh, Kevin Cleary, thirty D, twelve units at one oh five Milwaukee. Uh.
Quarter after nine.
Quarter after nine.
Quarter after nine, no one else.
Can I make a suggestion?
Make us a question, please.
My suggestion is if you can, if you, if you have a thought and census wise, do it. If you need more discussion, my idea is to be that you start the next meeting earlier.
Start the next thing at six thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I also?
What do you, I mean, it's up to you all. If you wanna give it a couple of minutes and see where it goes, that's fine with me.
I, I've listened to all of the hearings and I've attended them. And I think we pretty much have discussed everything we want. So I would like to make a motion to have Beth whatever resolution for our next meeting regarding, um, Milwaukee.
I will second that consensus vote.
What? Uh. Positive, I'm sorry.
No, or, or approval?
For approving.
Think it's pretty good enough.
Come on.
Do a draft resolution.
Draft a resolution.
Maybe you should do it both ways because we need to be discussing.
What is there allowed to discuss with the, with the project? I, I just.
I know.
Kitty's rightly. No, we have to, we have to vote on, uh, on the resolution.
Application, you should have a written resolution with condition.
Absolutely. You have to have the conditions.
Is that what you're asking?
That's what she's asking.
Thanks, thank you.
She was asking for you to, we make a motion for you to, for staff to write a positive approval.
I am not paying attention. I'm paying attention now. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'll have something available at the next meeting.
Second. So we're going to vote. Yeah, Kenny, yes. Me, yes. Kitty?
Yes.
Diane?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Leggard?
Yes.
There we go. So.
Okay, TD and son, so the, it's, it's a positive decision.
Positive decision. Positive for you two.
To go forward. All right, I'll do my best, but, okay, TD and sons, uh, with the previous subdivision, issued by the commission. The my law for the subdivision was never filed in the current time period. It will be coming in for our reapproval.
Is that the D O R?
Yes, unpaid. Okay.
I mean.
Uh, and that'll be here at the next meeting. Public hearing is not required. It is a subdivision, not a recent.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Kozowski?
Yes.
I, I, I don't mean to interrupt and I don't mean to add more work onto commission's agenda tonight. Do you, does the commission also want to consider adding one eighty-five Grassley Plain Street to their work session tonight?
Yes.
I have the draft.
Oh, all right. Uh, make a motion to add, uh.
Wait, I'm sorry. Um, you want to finish the TD and fans before you do this? No, it's fine.
You kind of said what you had to say, right? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to add, uh, one eighty-five Grassley Plain Street, Jar Associates LLC site plan, a special permit to our work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, so I, I believe Amanda is distributing a draft resolution.
Have it, David.
We got it. They have it.
You got it.
Okay, I will bring it up on the screen right now so that Mr. Leggard also has the benefit of taking a look at it. Can you see what's on the screen?
I can see it.
Excellent.
We ready?
This, this, this is a bit presumptive on my part for the, assuming that the commission would ask for a draft resolution of approval. If there's anything you want changed with the language, let me know. I can tweak it. No problem.
I suggested it.
I'm, I'm sorry?
I said, I suggested it. I told you. It's my fault. For them to have a written resolution because I knew the, the idea.
No, this is, I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah, it's fine.
I think everyone in here makes questions.
I would approve a special permit for an athletic club recreation use in accordance with four dash three dash F dash three of Bethel zoning regulations for the following youth ball, volleyball facility for training games, basketball, youth training and recreational football. This approval for the property owned by J R and Little C is subject to the following additions, one to four. Reading and granting this approval, the commission finds that the proposed use will not have a detrimental effect on the surrounding properties as in compliance with regulations. Furthermore, this project will not impair the health, safety and welfare of this community.
Circle. All right, roll call vote here.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Bob? All right. Good work, David.
Perfect. Did we, did we make a motion for that?
No, don't worry about it. Table.
Okay, table. Got it. Then yes.
Okay.
No planners report.
No planners report. Commission comments?
Kenny?
Concerning, uh, Taylor Avenue?
Taylor Avenue.
Yes. Um, wanting to extend the sewer utilities. Like to make a motion to the P U C to talk with the owners and see if we can get them to extend.
It's a, you're making a recommendation to the P U C to explore working with the, yeah.
Yeah.
What we said.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
What, five other families you set up there?
Yeah, there's two on the right, three on the left.
And none of, yeah. Okay. I can do that up.
Great. Thank you. Bro, do you have anything?
Nope.
Now we all want to go. Eight thirty G, they can just submit an application, about any three application here.
Okay.
Because I'm, 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 I'm exhausted of having design meetings in a public space here.
The reason you have design meetings in a public space is because there's a particular engineer that chooses not to. When I make contact with property owners, it changes.
What can we do?
Uh, uh, by not doing, there's nothing you can do.
That's what I wanted to ask.
Because it goes on and on and on and on for months and months because the communication is lacking.
To pull up a CAD file in the middle of a hearing to show a concept is ridiculous, might I say it?
I, what I.
It's hard enough for people to look at a black and white drawing.
Okay. I will give you, uh, I, I can give you one example. There's another, um, eight thirty G that is coming in. Uh, Noah Tribe and Resor Street, right? That, that particular property owner has worked with staff over the last, I want to say, three or four months to come to the conclusion of this is, this is the best plan to present to the commission at this time. Design wise, topography wise, um, access to town property and stuff. It was his choice to work with staff to try to bring something, not that you will approve it, but to bring something that is more
powerful.
palatable than what is originally. I mean, you see how it ha- has happened. You had to see it with six, city lane. You know, Motel Eight turned into six, whatever. Uh, it's, it's just hard when the property owner doesn't get involved from day one with working with the tenant. And leaves it to an engineer.
I guess my question.
And a lawyer to do it.
We, we, a while ago, we, we made, highly suggested or even mandatory for any site plan application.
Yes, it is a requirement under the application.
Well, because it's eight thirty G, we, that gets thrown out?
No, it doesn't in my opinion, but that's just my opinion. It's a site plan application like anything else. Eight thirty G is a site plan application.
Can we, is there anywhere we can verify that where we can then?
It's, it's written in the application process. It's written there. You can, certainly what you can do is deny an application without prejudice, requesting that they meet with staff to, and then resubmit. You certainly can do that. No matter who's sitting here, you can ask them, do you have a pre-op with them? No. Well, then I'm sorry, so and so. Until you have a pre-application, we cannot accept this application under the section. And it's right on the application.
Am I the other one? That, that's, that's a good.
No, it's a really good point.
That's an excellent point.
That was very good, Mike.
All right, sorry. Kitty? Any comments?
No.
Second. Eric, be quiet over there.
Nope.
Oh, there he is. He's. Bob, anything?
I'm good.
All right.
My thoughts.
I make a motion in the meeting.
All in favor?
Good night, Aunt Queen.